Go ahead.
Counselor Pelletier, roll call.
His lips said here.
Louis, you're muted.
I think.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Dumay. Chair Medor.
Here.
Counselor Danforth. And Counselor McGowan.
I'm here.
Oh, Counselor Higgins, I'm so sorry.
It's over here.
Oh, good name. Supposed to be after that.
Are we all set now?
Good.
All right. We go up these standards, move your hands, and George will send the budget.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Undergone.
All righty, Mr. Manager, any adjustments to the agenda?
Sir.
Oh, good. All right, I'm looking for the approval of the minutes for the October tenth, twenty twenty four executive session and regular council meetings.
Second.
Motion made by Council to make second by Council Higgins, any council discussions? Now the public. Back to the council, we're gonna have to do this by vote, Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council Higgins.
Aye.
Council Demay.
Aye.
Council Danforth. Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Medor, aye. All righty. We have a couple of special presentations. And the first one. Being a resolve. Honoring, uh, Russ Seer on his retirement. Council Demay, would you please read? Order a resolve, I'm sorry. I don't even have a number on it. Number eight, thank you. Twenty twenty four.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Ray, to the twenty twenty four. This proclamation honoring Russ Seer on his retirement. Whereas Russ Seer completed barber school in nineteen seventy two, became a civilian barber at the Civil Air Force in nineteen seventy three. Serving military personnel and their families. And in nineteen seventy six, himself and his loving wife, Billanocque, working for eight years assisting another local farmer perform a parade opening in his own laboratory. Whereas nearly five decades, Russ Seer has operated his business with enthusiasm and integrity, serving thousands of men and children from Billanocque as well as visitors to our town, of all walks of life across the United States. Whereas Russ Seer is proud member of the Catholic Church, has regularly volunteered in his functions, served his community as a member of the Knights of Columbus. Whereas Russ Seer is now retired from barber, keeping his his fondest memories, his published, including he is why he proudly raised his three daughters in Billanocque. And his four grandchildren, all while being self-employed. Now therefore, being resolved, the Billanocque Town Council, council assembled on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, does hereby recognize, honor, thank Russ Seer for his dedication to the town of Billanocque during his successful career as a proud Billanocque citizen.
Motion made by Council to make second by Council McGowan. Any council discussions? Council Danforth.
Mr. Chairman.
Five decades. Yeah, that's what it's my father. My son and my grandson. Yeah. Well, what I understand, they're replacing me with two individuals, not just one. Okay, well done. But anyway, you will be missed and you will be remembered.
Counselor Man, I'm going, sorry.
I was looking, I was looking this way, and I thought I was gonna have Council Mackin.
To want to congratulate Russ on his retirement. Uh, thank you for your service. I remember both of my boys getting their first haircut of Russ. And that, well, you were located across the street over the other time. But, um, it's quite an amazing career. You serve this community well and been friendly and kind to everyone you've served. So thank you.
Council Higgins.
I just want to say thank you, Russ. Good luck in your retirement. We've sat down there and talked many a time about a lot of different subjects. And if you want to know what's going on around the town, definitely want to go down there to his. But thank you. Good luck. Well deserved.
Mr. Manager.
Nobody gave that bolt cut like you, Russ. Hey, you know, and, and, and growing up here and getting, you know, religiously getting haircuts from Russ for so many years. Uh, I remember, you know, going down there when, when, you know, money was tight as, as a kid. And it was, you know, hey, did my mom call you? Or, you know, yeah, she can square up with me afterwards and, you know, always willing to, to go beyond and help and make sure everybody look good and, and for, for the Christmas dances and the proms and, you know, school pictures and everything. Uh, regardless of their situation. He made it happen and, and you let a lot of people, uh, uh, square up later and that, that was really cool. Uh, but I, I, I'll, I'll hold forever cherished my, uh, all those school pictures with that really awesome mushroom cut. Congratulations.
Counselor Demay.
I'm very, very happy that we were able to do this. I think that we should do this more often for voting services and head funds of the uh, people retire all the time. It doesn't affect that's, that's part of the, for them and their families, of course, and private willings, but you know, I'm a little bit bigger, like, uh, this year has been and certain things go and go through on colors. So, um, Ross. Was kind of like going to the bar and going to the professional.
Because I think between him and the locks probably has more secrets than anybody. So you and Tom St. John probably have more confessions than any priest up there. So, well, it's been a lot of laughs over the years. I guess of a bi-personal experience. You can just go and cut it out with their language and and, uh, it won't look that way afterwards, but I would always say just cut the gray ones or or something like that. I never did get, uh, he was the first one to always tell you that he doesn't give us charges. And so, um, he won't do any waxing. Can you see like that? But, uh, he also be the first cutting the difference in barber and hairdresser. And Billanocque is losing its power. There's plenty of hairdressers that anybody go to, but there's some things that I was thinking, I don't even mind waiting for. Um, but yeah, Russ. Uh, I think you've been great friends in Billanocque, back there. And I think you, uh, I'm glad we had this day and age too, can't, um, of reason. That's a puppy, uh, I never stand. So all that takes is soul. So like Counselor Higgins says, hope you get to rest, relax, enjoy your family. Do all the things. We look for that.
Got that? Okay.
Um, congratulations on your retirement. Um, I'm sure people are gonna miss you in this town. They really are, even though there's somebody taking over, they're really gonna miss you. And I remember you gave my son his first haircut, so.
Giving either one of my boys a haircut because I did. But I do remember one Christmas Eve when I was right out straight and I said, I'm gonna go ahead and do this. So I walked down to your shop and I walked in and look on your face like I had done something wrong. And you said, what did you want? I said, I'm come get my haircut. And you went, really? Yes, yeah. And it was like, hey. You know? And I have always enjoyed our talks. I have always very much enjoyed, uh, anytime I've seen you. I, I don't think I've ever seen you, Russ, without a smile on your face. And I think that whether it's in the grocery store or out with family or whatever, your personality and your positivity have always shown through with everything that you've done and everyone that you've met. I know that part isn't gonna change. Enjoy your retirement. It's a lot to be, you know, I'm sure you have a honeydew list for him. Very much so. Thank you for the service given to the town of Billanocque, but more importantly, thank you to the friendship given to the With that, I'll take you down to the public. Anybody to the public? The nun. I'll bring you back up to the council. Oh, would you, would you like to say something? Actually, would you come up and Diana will turn the mic on for you and They're all set.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for the nice words, uh, unbelievable support that I've been getting for weeks and months there. So, uh, it's been a pleasure. I'm gonna miss everybody, but I'll be around. We're not going. So, uh, I want to thank everybody, whole town, actually. Boy, they really supported me. They still are. So we have a lot of fun.
A lot of fun. You can't talk about those.
Yeah, right. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right. We will go ahead and vote now on the resolve. All right, on resolve, number eight, that's twenty twenty four. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mack.
Aye.
Council Higgins.
Aye.
Council Demay.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Medor, aye. It is Diana. You can stick around for the rest of the meeting if you want to.
You know, the later we're here, the more entertaining they get.
Oh, yes. All right, getting back to business here. Uh, we have another special presentation this time by Diana Furkawa from the Billanocque Memorial Library on your quarterly update. Thank you in advance, by the way, for sending email out with the snapshots that we're already, who had a chance to look at this.
Of course, and sorry for not, um, having them in time for the package.
Not a problem.
Um, so to share my I am on my own phone hotspot, so let me know if because, uh, that.
Yes.
Great. So yeah, I'm Diana Furkawa. This is my quarterly presentation. Um, tonight I am going to start by giving an update about how the library was used this summer. Uh, my last presentation, I think, was so I know it's, it's well into the fall, but I do want to report on the fall. Um, and then I'll move into financial on how the twenty twenty four budget is end of our and, uh, sharing a draft of next budget. And just stop me at any point if you have else. And, um, so in the library, I did send out this snapshot, um, last month, fall, and for our audience, I think it really just captures what the summer was like. It was, I've worked at MML since twenty eighteen and I can honestly say it's the busiest summer that I've seen there. Um, now, more kids doing some this about the summer, not signing up and kind of peeping out, but, uh, thanks to something called gibbets, uh, which I learned is some, a decoration for, uh, crocs or bracelets, kind of a charm. Who knew? Uh, you know, they would get gibbets along the way and that really motivated a lot of them to come back, like they're, we even had kids like knocking on the door. Uh, so you find those little things that keep them engaged and certainly summer. Um, I'll dive into some of the other specifics a bit more, um, as I go on. In terms of, uh, hours, uh, we did experiment with some additional eating hours, trying to, um, help serve learned nine to five jobs, tried out, uh, Tuesdays until eight P M. Uh, it wasn't super busy, but I think it did serve some different folks and it allowed us to try out a staggered staffing model that I think could work, uh, potentially with some subs or sick. Um, overall, though, we did see in traffic. Um, I'm gonna show a few of these kind of comparative graphs, um, and really I'm, I'm pointing out red line, which this year just compared to some other. Um, I provide these numbers every month in that council public. But sometimes it's like, what does that number mean? So I'm trying to put them into more context to show you at the shape of a typical lake. So summer is usually the peak. Uh, this summer, we actually saw almost eight thousand people, uh, come to the door. It's about a hundred and fifty seven per day. But okay. Uh, uh, yeah, so that was great to see and it's definitely from, um, back out outlier. But the traffic, I mean, what does that mean? It's still a rather I just really wanted to emphasize um, all these behind that um, all kinds of, um, from, you know, just wanting a action, uh, to having been about to find a contractor down, how to sign up uh, to obviously that. Um, I really sort, um, categories, there's sort of our core services. Sure. About that, uh, our programs and um, and then that sort of questions. Reference and ask. So in terms of our courses, how they um, summer, ask. And I'm looking at the red line and seeing, you know, some increases in the use of that we have here in libraries and wifi use. Well, um, where meeting rooms, I think they're, you know, probably down a little bit where it was outside, but folks, those, all kinds of eating with their watching TV or playing a game, uh, to bobbing a fellow. Uh, that circulation, uh, is great. And, um, I see all this. And in fact, hired. That's um, and then just card holders. I wanted to emphasize those asked how we um, I, it's about nine hundred. So twenty twenty two day nine hundred. You don't need to have a card. Wanted to show that. Um, moving on to programs, um, I think last time they were about like, how many people go to them? So I did want to share both how many we offer, uh, for adults. Five. Um, so that's averaging about month. Summer. Our um, then in addition, forty five are often for attendance. Um, it really varies a lot. Now for adults, add six hundred and eighty eight cards out program, but some are totally honest, some ends up and for, uh, seven are six. Um, then six library. What are these? I just wanted to show a snapshot. Every button. Hands have several options. Um, that are um, props. Uh, I really love those hands-on ones. The bottom thing about their backyard. At, um, or at a uh, hard me plea driven by um, and then of course, uh, of course access office hour, uh, we had um, August of the month, nine at cab. Friday. Um, you library. Um, for summer uh, we have plenty of time and are with the library. Uh, you can order honestly, some way. Fighting. Uh, we had our cams, um, and them on at a so they work about I um, really messy, but, uh, really worth it. Um, and then summer. Um, so I'd have science. Science. Uh, then library, um, I love this topic, um, I learned about by tying some of these. So and again, the hands-on. Have. Um, summer lunch. So that is, uh, a natural program. Uh, lunches at the library. Um, and was it by a few summers bonding? Uh, but I also think a lot of it was just foot traffic. Times last. Um, we have increased or also since, kind of just how it works. Um, have a lot of space. So, and I think we're also getting out thing basically fast. Other kind of that uh, the majority of the instance we, we are um, or others, um, major. Well, um, so you can following gotten as a staff definitely a lot of our summer. Um, sound. So, uh, back to my question, what I just want to zoom in on the question aspect that, um, share a little bit about our reference navigating on. Um, get all kinds of library, something you might not expect. Just like that I've asked. Um, things like, help me find restaurant. Um, um, how do I can uh, housing option? Get questions about books and that, uh, just all kinds of um, that get at the desk, people don't know where else. I think that's actually ordered to measure. I don't have like excellent I didn't I as X dots. Uh, for example, uh, a couple of weeks ago on again on Saturday, walked had lost my housing. You and we sit down with her and active that number posted, but well, that's exceptional. And, uh, that's just fun.
I love the laugh.
My wife got me, my dad had it. My favorite one was actually when calling and saying stung me, no idea. I said, call the hospital. Get some weird ones, but I think it is really important. Um, there's so and I don't know, but so we kind of sort these uh, hundreds you had to have third guest that are often on additional libraries and libraries. And then have our health desk offer by and so on. I think are often and not only often are, um, a lot of, uh, access I find it. So I just wanted to try and uh, I know how six had to be are there any questions on any library? Six updates shared. On.
I I'm very proud of the fact that library, especially program. Think it's great service. Bad. Pass. Double edged. Wonderful that the service is there, lies thank bad. But also times I think there presentation that being I've been so and I found time. Have otherwise walk back on how to um, I I that's, I, I, like you say, I appreciate everything that you I think you fabulous job. I I just then see that it passed. I'm glad that you can tend on it, great with that app. Does obviously either. Oh, counsel question. Diane. Hey.
Fun stuff. Thanks. You tell them my graph. Um, so I'll be talking about because I think a lot of what I would share gets in next, but this is a snapshot, you know, five, or seventy five percent are and, uh, brought in nine that we um, so we're in very good shape on the inside of and that's good. The budget's bad, uh, had nineteen thousand. So we're not only the budget, but yet. So and that's largely we have our, um, our annual fundraising up. Um, still the other income line item out with grants, which is a little less than budgeted, just as, um, kind of technically gotten um, asking higher stake. Have us back. So that happened.
Um. Or. And side of it, so um. I swear I'll get on the, my part, but uh, we're pretty much on track in all these categories that. So. Uh, ongoing back, uh. Add um, this is down. Up. Also really add up a bit. People playing a troubleshooting game. So a little bit on. Got to build it out in yesterday and the game and um. That, um, everything else much. Cracked. So I, I want to. The five upper graph. Um, and just an important note, um, in this graph, it didn't. Come in sense, so. Nob's got county library. Um, I've got. For staff time. So as I was talking. Um, used to be more of a separate. Practice. And um, in our specific asset. Really thought hard about that, felt that aspect outside of the library, failed it back. I, um, they are. But as it's been integrated back library operating, I think it's more accurate. I have, um, that funding, uh, we have enough, uh, we have to use. Uh, we have some other funding that's been allocated to navigate. Have enough to cover the staff. Seven, five is the time to figure out how to make that difference. And I feel pretty about that. Rather fundable type of project, had a lot of libraries. I love that, it also has a task. Lot of. Riding, tech. Questions. So. Down. Now. Questions, but. For the sake of a. The. Top narrative graphs, um, they show uh, the art funds uh, in. Apple. Count them. Um, so just to give you. Eight twenty five, um. The budget, um, you know, twenty twenty three was such an outlier year for. Like four thousand dollars, that was one time precedent. If, so you can't really that level. Um, this year. That five thousand change, uh, the friends. Uh, that group has. Uh. House. Fundraise ads, so you'll see you in. Um, oh, and not where we do it, so I didn't want to, uh. Add a. Yes, yeah. Very. Uh. It's. Um, now. Um, so that's a much. Uh, um, income, uh, finding. Uh, five, that's uh, there, five thousand. Um, and revenue, I think, uh, shared. Budget, um, finding. Uh, our contract with the collaborative, um, and also. Targets. So and then I'm not going to, this is just showing if contracts out. That, um. Not actually. Um, so I just wanted to show this, I asked. Uh, to emphasize, um, yes, some things. Uh, donation. But I think what we're really trying to is the five income that we have, that's. I'll go into a little step on the. I'd. Down. For expenses, Harrison overtime, I think, um, most are similar. Uh, some increase. Yeah, um. Honestly, just. At least. That is up five. Uh, just trying to keep up regardless. Administrative expenses, uh, I'll get into. Cargo. Practice services that we haven't. And then thing. Lost the living and reason, and then uh, adding. I mentioned out for um, hours by staggered staffing. So I'll dive into, um, how to think. Or. Um. Try to be relative. If when we fit, um, I want to say, I think we. Forty five thousand. So I will just say, like, this is a conservative, I had, um, I made an optimum one that actually. Effective that we might bring. Fifty thousand dollars, so there's greater. On a. Um, one of them is a foundation, uh, they've been a. Us over past five. Um, and thinking on. Have like funding. Don't know the amount yet of what that looks like, um, but we have eighty thousand. Um, I'll have answers. Um, for interest income, I did want to point out, like. Uh, we were able to pass. All and along, so now we can generate. Cost beats. Um. Um. Revenue consulting work, as I meant, so this is just if we. Contract with the. But it's, uh, it's likely that we send that, so that would. Um. Those are the lines I wanted to. Out. About.
What?
Is there any?
Yeah. Hey, Ben.
Alright, so expenses, um, for collection and community engagement, not a lot of. Good, again, I have. Seems too far. Um, so now that. That we. Um, at state level. Community engagement, we actually that budget, budget. For facility, um. Some increase repair. Unknown. Back. Said, especially in the facility realm. Reasing rates. For. And expenses, um. Again, the line item, two thousand dollars and active. Of our new. Process, um, I'm happy to say this is the last bit that will have. Six. Account that will be. Ah. Can't wait. But how to fulfill those obligations, um. The two areas of practice that we add, one is, um, the contracted writer, um, about hours a month. But not like. This person. And but, um, I think that by word pressure. At. How to do around that. Era, so I think it could be a good one-off investment. That one. Other area is, um. So we have not had a. Past, I mean, that we've done. And we've been able to do that in-house, um. I don't think at the level that we're at, that's. So adding, I think it could save us. Um. I'm probably a lot more. Asked. Are, and that would. But. So that'll be a good. Even save us. Financial filing. Having. Um. Lastly, you know, something supposed. Um, that basically every time we. Sent work, it pays itself, kind of just leveled it last year and. Echo. Um. For payroll and just. Um. Under budgeting for your own favorite line item access to the past year, so just wanted to that and. Actually right at that level. And then for salaries, it's, uh, like I said, all the. Um. In the operating. That were. Uh, Dobbs got. Budget accounts, three percent possible. Uh, raise. And the only added staff time is, um, I'm subs. Um, I was more flexible and allow the staff that have to actually still come. They have. Subs. Um, just gonna zoom back to the slide. But. But. Uh, just to show our. So that all the positions affecting budgets doesn't in library staff. Um, that's still separate. Okay, um. So, uh, director, assistant director, um. Um, programs, we have, um, a lot of the financial. Well, uh, we have our. Peter. S. Um, for operating. Down. Circulate S. Um, and over. A part. Special. To add. So in total, we're talking about. Uh, library. So I'm almost done, I swear, but uh. So, but this does bring us to negative thirty five thousand dollars. Uh, here, I said. Give a. It, I optimum one showed thousand dollars. Um. Probably. Um, we have any. That we balance that, um. I don't think. Not a. As. Bit. Because the projections, okay? Can't all. Um, but I'm happy to, any questions you all have about any that. Finder, but that process. You ran the. Started on it, really the summer. By levels of, uh, library committee. And we can have a couple months. Public or anyone back. Thank you.
Questions, comments, present. Gee, really, you're working in a good room tonight, I see. Thank you again, these quarterly reports are very concise, they're very well done, and they really are. Very self-explanatory, and I'm glad to see them, uh, it keeps the town informed. Um, said many times, we're very, very fortunate to have the library and very fortunate to have you running. I. Encourage you. And. I won't be here for the next quarterly report, but uh, I'm sure that, oh, it's not that. Just a chair, but I think you're like a great seller. Uh. Uh. But again, thank you so much for everything you. For all of you, young and old, and uh. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Yes.
Well, eleven thirty Congress Street, I was just looking at the proposed budget. You're spending, uh, four thousand eight hundred. Grant writers. Somehow. Library, now. Amber, turn around, take some back, write grant, autumn.
My honest answer to the thought is, I think that Amber has played now with trying to. Validity in writing grants now. Uh, I, I don't know how much of the order and Andrew could probably answer that, I'm thinking. That a pretty. Between that and the committees that she works on and everything, that a pretty.
Trying to say. Somebody in the town helped consult, David. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anna, looks like you're all set.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on, there's no unfinished business, so to new business, we're moving right on to the manager's report.
All right. Good evening, folks. Um. I have twelve pages of manager's report, per usual, I'm not going to read it all.
Okay.
Um, one item I would like to talk about. At first is, um. Easier access to viewing, uh, my manager's reports and those that come along with it. Um, recently, well, within the last week or so, uh, did an overhaul on the town manager's page, uh, at our website, melanocket.org. So that now contains a detailed and realistic description of. The position of town manager in a town like ours, um, and outlines its relationships and. With the elected officials and with the community. Um, it also hosts a very direct and easy, easily accessible archive of all of the town manager reports that. Um, have been submitted during my time in the position, dating back to January two thousand and two. Um, so those are all listed right at, right on that page, uh, accessible. What did I say?
Thousand.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I was in high school. Two thousand twenty-two, uh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so. You know, I, I, I do hope this serves as a solution to a lot of confusion around, um. The duties involved with the position of town manager, um, I certainly encourage anyone and everyone to. Visit that page, give it a good looksee, um, and take a read through any of the manager's reports, you know, I, I, I briefly overview a lot of them and then. Um, you know, there's far more great information, um, available from just about every meeting. Uh, the bridge is open, Nob's got half to Riverside Drive and Iron Bridge Road, um, that was three years of obstacles and. And funding challenges and material. That was three years of obstacles and, and funding challenges and material challenges. But it is done and it came together very well over the last six weeks or so. Very thrilled to put that behind us. We certainly appreciate the community's patience and understanding as we work through the modernization of our municipal building elevator. It's, it's, you know, a critical piece of infrastructure to the building and, and, you know, it's been a couple of years of planning and working towards this work to be done, but it improves all of the fire safety elements, the electrical components, and the mechanical operation of, of very obsolete models that were at play for a long time. So during that outage of the elevator and the accessible entrance, I've installed a ring doorbell right off the sidewalk out front, and folks with limited mobility can reach that with ease, communicate with those of us on staff inside the building and, we can come out and bring whatever materials we need and assist them however they need. So thank you all for your patience. It'll be a few more weeks, and then we'll have a much safer and more efficient elevator. Dr. Lane will be joining us, second meeting of November, November twenty-first, to do the school's quarterly update presentation with the council, keeping in the tradition we had started in the past couple of years. That's when I will do our quarterly financial update. It is going to be about midway through quarter two, but that's how the schedule works at times. Last piece in my portion of this report, I just want to seek some official input from the council. I've approached the topic of moving our meeting location for the organizational meeting on November eleventh after the council meeting. You know, the elevator still will be out. This room will not be ADA compliant, but you know, accessible to all. So my suggestion is that, given the importance of that meeting, the additional family members, the photo ops, things that happen at that meeting, I'd love to consider a relocation, maybe to room at the school or Grants, Sterns or Grant Street, even the library. If the council would like to direct me to do that, I'm happy to make those arrangements. In the clerk and I, Diana and I, would like to get that. If we are moving, we'd like to get it in to next week's newspaper, so that can run for two weeks in the newspaper as well as advertise it on all our other platforms.
I would think. High school library. Good area. At Canada. I think that would be area I think comedy. I was. Doctor. I would.
True. Well, I can, I can certainly communicate with them and find a, find an option if available. So you know, we can, you guys can weigh in on that. We have a lot going on through the other departments here. Public Works Crew has, has done a lot of spot paving along Rice Farm Road, fixing low spots and washouts, utility cuts and the like. They've also done a large amount of shoulder work out there, about forty truckloads of material actually along there, bringing the shoulders up to the same height as the road surface. Yeah, we certainly appreciate the, the dedication that they have into keeping our roads as, as nice as possible. And they're also, they're working on repairing this awning out front of the municipal building. You know, I've had that out to bid. I've contacted people directly. Just no interest, counselor doing, no interest at all. So they, they, you know, were able to be flexible and come down, put some of their wide, wide array of skills to use over there, doing some carpentry. We really appreciate that. Recent storm at the cemetery has caused a whole lot of decorations to blow off their respective graves. All of those have been picked up and placed near the maintenance building, so anyone wishing to claim those decorations may do so. The ones that are left behind will be disposed of, and the cemetery all cleanup has happened, yes? Oh, sorry. Is it, is the cemetery all cleaned up and closed, or is that? Okay, coming to an end for the season up there. So please be aware of your sites and decorations and take care of those things. The airport guard system's got eighty-eight aircrafts coming through there as of the seventeenth of this month, and quite a bit of traffic since then. Just not reported. Jet fuel and nav gas sales are still quite high right into October, a time when we usually see a drop off there. So traffic is steady and even increasing at times. The fly-in cruising event that they do out there was a darn good success despite the fifty mile an hour winds. I was there for just a few minutes. It was, it was wonderful to see so many cars, but you know, no planes were flying that day. But it was, it was great. The fire department was there, the Pioneer Hose Company, they did a cookout and raised a fair amount of money for the scholarship fund. I included a few pictures in the report there provided by Jeff Campbell. I'm going to skip down to community initiatives director, and, and actually, I'm going to give a little bit of, of props to rector, rector Cody in the back of the room here with his submission to that this month. It was, it, it, the addition that comes out tomorrow of the newsletter is the first addition in the history of the newsletter to have all departments of the town represented in the same newsletter. I'm guilty too. A lot of times mine doesn't get in there, but you know, with the two of us on, it's all there. It's great. So look forward to that. Skeetow work is happening. We had a site visit with the Toe Pro Company just a couple of days ago. Warming hot will be here soon. A lot of the groundwork's happening this weekend. The electrical's getting connected. I think we're going to be running that Skeetow this winter. Cody and I have a little more discussion and planning to do on, on some of the staffing of that, but we're really looking forward to opening that up and providing that opportunity for folks. Interesting piece here, our community initiatives director that we had just speaking of a moment ago. She has. She's now serving on the University of Maine Advisory Committee for Community Sustainable Energy. So that was a, an invite that she got through, you know, her professional network and the, and the and the name she's, you know, been building her, building for herself throughout the career here. We're certainly proud of her to be representing our town and using her knowledge to advise that, that group. Congratulations to her. Absentee ballots are still available, have been available since October first, first. I can tell you the traffic in the hallway has been overwhelmingly amazing is a good way to put that. They are available until October thirty-first. That can be in person, online at main.gov, by phone or by mail. That is for the upcoming election, of which locally we have two council seats available. The contenders for that seat are Matt Braden, Tammy Craig, Tammy Glaline, and Gilda Stratt. One seat on the school board. It's a three-year term. Rachel Seer is on the ballot, as well as Warren Stewart, who has verbally communicated as much as possible that he does not wish to run in the election. However, his, it was too late. So, vote for Rachel. Snowmobile registrations for twenty-five are available as of a few days ago, and the clerk's office has been mandated a new process for electronic dog registration. What we are asking is that folks, please be patient and understand that this is a very new system. It's quite a bit more informative. The, the, the dog owners are expected to bring in the current rabies vaccinations, and then other information that's available on our site and on Facebook and through the clerk's office, and it, it, it has proven to be quite time-consuming for each transaction so far with new system. So we, we certainly ask for those to remain patient as they work through those, especially this incredibly busy time of year during the election. We've got a lot of good stuff going on in the fire department report. I hope that you take a good look at it. The recreation department report and the East Molinocket Police Department report is attached. I will say it's been a great pleasure to, to work with Cody recently in the rec department as he trains and comes on board during the transitional time and say, you know, it's been a. It's been great to see so far, and I think that there's a lot of progress to be made, and, and he's certainly doing a great job already. So please take a look at that report and that's all, folks.
Any comment on the band?
I just want to clarify on that. So.
I'm the clar.
Can you clarify with me? So I know we're meeting on the, the eleventh is the informational meeting. So indeed, the, the twenty-first, which would be the third Thursday, ten days after is the next council meeting? No.
In November, we always meet on the, the, the second and second and fourth Mondays of the month.
Oh.
Always.
That's right.
Manager had put in his report, Dr. Lane.
The manager is wrong. Yeah.
Is wrong. I did.
So he is correct and not clarified.
Manager is wrong. That is the wrong date. Diana's absolutely right.
So it will be Monday.
Yes.
That's what I thought. And then in December, it goes, we'll go back to the regular schedule.
Correct.
This one you're crazy, but.
The organizational meeting always is on the Monday following the election at seven P M.
You.
Welcome.
Anybody else?
Thank you. For that. And I will say, well done with the town manager page. I have looked at that. When you sent out an email, it was very comprehensive, very well done, read all your managers' reports, what, what provides tons of information. Good numbers to read as well as those of us sitting up. So yes, thank you. And I will, on the, on the police report, I'm anxious to learn more. I know that Gerald mentions this in here, but they're still working out logistics and trying to bring a school resource offer through the Melonogus. And they hope to have more regarding this in the coming week. I'm still very interested. For more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Down the public, buddy on the manager. I'll be on. All right, I just, I always wanted to point out too, one of the things about the airport is the fact that we are having the first construction of a hangar out there since nineteen eighty-eight, I believe. A new construction of a new hangar. It's going along quite well. I took a tour with the airport manager out to the site and got to talk with him and his plans. And it's going to be a nice structure, and it's going to add a lot to the airport forward, starting to down that, that line that we want to hopefully have all kinds of new hangars there and all kinds of tax revenue coming from there.
Yeah, so that's, that's the first of, well, there's, there's a second one coming behind it.
Right.
And that's not even, that doesn't include any of the eight lots that we've cleared to prepare to market as soon as that apron work is completed next year. So, you know, next summer, we'll have eight more hangar lots available for lease, and there's waiting list on them already. So people who want to lease those lots and put brand-new hangars on them, added to Dex rolls and that whole ordeal. So there's a lot of, a lot of great stuff happening over there.
Now, Council Danforth's already weighed in. Is everybody all set? Go ahead and move the organization, Council Pete. High School Library, would that be all right for everyone?
I'd like to suggest Granite Street as well. The cafeteria over there is pretty open. You can feel stuff in there as well. I mean, it's, I mean, that has to go through Shelley, but of course, superintendent.
Yeah, well, I, I would check with her and Louis as well. De Frederico. Find out what's available and do the, there's a form that I, I need to fill out, so we'll, we'll work through that, see if there's an option.
But as of right now, one Okay. Seeing nothing from the public? Let's get back on the agenda here. Counselor, oh. Ooh. Whoa, here. Got myself down here. Orders two thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, providing for execution of the town warrant for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered the town warrant for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-six cents is hereby approved. Made by Chair Madora, sectioned by Council May. We have a few fun facts in here. We have twenty-four thousand dollars to Adam Quayle Incorporated. That's for sand. We have forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents for main water. That is water usage. We have thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for our library. That's our quarterly payment. We have ten thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. That goes to Solutions LLC. That is the waste disposal. And nineteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollar and fifty cents for the town of East Molinocket to pay our portion of rector, rector's salary forward and, of course, our ever-present thirteen thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents to verse of power for East. Any council discussion on the quarter? Down to the public. I, council. Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Madora is aye. It's deafening, but unanimous. Council Mackin, can I please get you to read order two thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four?
Order two thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred, ninety dollars and one cent is hereby approved. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and one cent is hereby approved.
Second, motion made by Councillor Mackin, second by Councillor Demme. Councillor Mackin, any vacators?
Uh, let me see. Five thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents to percent power.
Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. Councillor Pelletier, how are you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McGowan? Chair Madora's aye. It's unanimous. Councillor Higgins, can I please get you to read order two forty dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order twenty, sorry, two. Pardon? Order. Twenty twenty-four, providing for date, time, place, warden for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general referendum and municipal elections. It is ordered that the general referendum and municipal elections will be held on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four from eight A M. to eight P M. at Stern's High School Gymnasium. It is further ordered that Diana and Blakeman will be the warden of said election.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Higgins, second by Councillor McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Done down the public? Back to council. Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor Demme? Councillor McGowan? Chair Madora's aye. It's unanimous. Councillor Pelletier, can I please get you to read order two forty-one dash twenty twenty-four?
Certainly. Order number two forty-one dash twenty twenty-four, providing for processing absentee ballots for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general referendum and municipal elections. Whereas Title twenty-one dash A M R S A, Section seven fifty-nine point seven allows the election warden and appointed deputies to process absentee ballot while the polls are open. And whereas processing such ballots will assist the election clerk and result in an expedited process after the polls are closed. And whereas expediting the process after the polls are closed will result in some savings to the town of Millinocket. Now, therefore, it is ordered that the election warden is authorized to process absentee ballots at nine A M., eleven A M., two P M. and six P M. during the general referendum and municipal election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made by Councillor Pelletier, second by Councillor Danforth. Any council discussion? Down to the public. Back to the council. Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme? Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Madora's aye. It's unanimous. Councillor McGowan, can I please have you read order two forty-two dash twenty twenty?
Certainly. Order number two forty-two dash twenty twenty-four, providing for office hours of the registrar for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general referendum and municipal election. Whereas Title twenty-one A M R S A, Section one twenty-two six specifies the process that, that the registrar must follow in registering voters. And whereas the town clerk also serves as registrar. And whereas the town clerk has regular hours on four business days before Election Day to register voters. And whereas being open evening hours as required by law to receive voter registrations will be an added cost to the municipality. Now, therefore, it is ordered that it is not necessary that the registrar be open to accept voter registrations for two hours in the evening between five P M. and nine P M. on at least three days before Election Day.
Motion made by Councillor McGowan, second by Councillor Danforth. Any council discussion? Down to the public. Back to the council. Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Madora's aye. It is unanimous. Councillor Danforth, can I please ask you to read order two forty-three dash twenty twenty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number two forty-three dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of additional elevator modernization funding. Whereas order number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-four, which is attached, identified the funding plan for the municipal building elevator modernization project. And whereas the recent site visit and preparation for this work identified additional critical updates needed to electrical and fire safety infrastructure to move forward. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the allocation of up to twenty-six thousand, one hundred towards the, towards this urgent matter. Nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and six cents to be allocated from remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding with a balance of up to seventy thousand, twelve dollars and ninety-four cents to be paid from unassigned funds.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Danforth, second by Councillor McGowan. Any council act comment on this? Down to the public? Back to the council. Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth? Councillor McGowan? Chair Madora's aye. It's unanimous. Councillor Mackin, can I please get you to read order two forty-four dash twenty twenty?
Order number two, two forty-four dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of funding for transfer site repairs. Whereas urgent and critical issues have been identified within the structure of the town's trash compactor as a transfer site. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the attached quote from Emery Lee and Sons Incorporated of Millinocket in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. And that the funding for these repairs be allocated, allocated from the unassigned fund balance.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Mackin, second by Councillor Demme. Manager, do you want to elaborate a little on this or already affairs on this? I understand we had, this was easy bidder and.
Uh, not a bidder. This is, uh, classified under a, uh, emergency purchase under our procurement policy. Uh, we felt we needed to act very quickly on it. What's happening is the hopper on one side is, uh, separating from, uh, the structure of the building and the concrete, uh, that is the floor of the building. So, um, you know, with, with cars and traffic coming in and out of there, we need to fix that and we need to fix it quick.
Thank you. Any council comment on the order? Down the public? Back to the council. Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme? Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Madora's aye. It's unanimous. Councillor Higgins, can I please get you to read order two forty-five dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, Chairman Madora. Order number two forty-five, twenty twenty-four, providing for award of forty-two Aristic Avenue Demo Bid. Whereas the Millinocket Town Council accepted ownership of forty-two Aristic Avenue and authorized the town manager to post a request for proposals for the demolition and clearing of this property via order two fifteen, twenty twenty-four. And whereas this R F P. received two bids, it is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council, at the recommendation of the town manager, awards this bid to Emery Lee and Sons, Inc. at their proposed price, twenty-five thousand dollars. It is further ordered that the funding for the work be allocated from the unassigned fund.
Motion made by Councillor Higgins, second by Councillor Demme. Hopefully, this is the first of more than a few delighted properties in the town that can finally get working through the system and get turned down. So, we work here. This is a start, and I applaud the manager for the, the, uh, work that he's done to get this to this point. And I tell you the truth, honestly, look forward to seeing that property on, uh, Pink Can Alley torn down. So, uh, with that being said, any council discussion on the? Down to the public. Back to the council. Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme? Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Madora's aye. It's unanimous. Sports and Communication, Foreign Committee for the November seventh, twenty twenty, uh, eleven. Yep. Yep. For the November eleventh council meeting will be Councillor McGowan, Councillor Pelletier. Are we all set?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Any reports here, clippers? I, I would, I'd notice I'd look for you first.
Thank you. So, I don't have a report, but the next age-friendly committee meeting, it will be November twelfth at two o'clock at the library. I'll have the, all that stuff posted on the town website. We are have a meeting next Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, just as a wrap up of the, um, progress and arson pocket that happened this summer. So, we'll, uh, hear about how that went and ways to improve next year, um, that happening as well. So, perhaps next meeting I'll have an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we do have, uh, short-term rental proposal is in the hands of the planning board.
Not the attorney.
Not the attorney. They're in the hands of the planning board, and the planning board will be scheduling a, a meeting on that ordinance coming right up. I talked to the head of the planning board, Mike Wallace, just the other day, and, uh, it's been received and reviewed by him. And he's bringing it to the planning board. Who've also, I think he said, did he not bring it to you? Bring it. Okay. All right. But that is, that is coming to fruition finally. And hopefully by, with planning board meeting and everything else, hopefully by the first of the year, we'll have that ordinance in place. All right. Anything else? We go out to the two-minute public comment.
Chair Madora?
Yes, sir.
Um, in light of the candidate's night, and this has been a discussion for quite a while. I would like to suggest that we start talking about doing either a public meeting or a town hall meeting about consolidating.
Consolidation. Full consolidation. Uh, certainly. Uh, I'm not really in a situation myself to say, you know, how this is going forward. But this has been a, this has been a topic of conversation on and off within the community since the nineteen eighty. It is time again, I think, to have the public discussion. I agree with Councillor Higgins. I think it's addressed. I think it's out there. And I think really it's time to take, uh, I want to sort of say, take the temperature of the town to see if it is, you know, healthy enough to go ahead in one, because I agree, getting to, because I'm getting to the point now where that's a good something. Ball saw, you go follow to anybody who saw the, the, uh, increases in the budget last year and how that drove tax dollars, uh, and go ahead and, like I say, have the frank discussion, whether it be, and we can consider one of two things, I believe, going forward. General consolidation, which is moving Granite Streets into the high school. Still hold eight hundred, and it's totally being underutilized for consolidating with our, our neighboring towns. I believe those options should both be explored. Councillor Demme?
We should count on that.
Councillor McGowan?
I just want to say, I do support a school consolidation. I think it's very important that the school is involved in this. This is, this is not something that the town council is trying to dictate. That they need to be, uh, involved in that as far as consolidating within the town. There's a lot, there's a lot behind it. There was, I'm not going to get into the specifics, but that's not a easy thing to do. So, the school needs to be involved, um, and, you know. Lost it. But anyway, just very important that it's an open consolidation. It's not us saying we're mandating that, so we're doing that.
No, I think that's why a public meeting like Councillor Higgins suggested for all sides to come.
Yeah. And the other thing I was going to point out was, even though if we have that town hall meeting and Millinocket is in favor of it, we got to remember we cannot force other people to consolidate. And that is something I've heard from inside sourcers, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Demme?
I agree with Councillor Higgins. I think first up, be the first person to. Studies have been done. Studies have been done. Any can be done. The vote at first, that's at first, all stated. So, um, don't I? I, how it goes. I'll practice this by saying. Oh, did it? Before half the meeting? Haven't done. Not where I want to go with this, but the next, the next chairperson going to have to take. Either. So, meetings like that that I've attended before were council or hosting.
And I think.
Yeah.
That way we can at least have the temperature of the town again. See, get the balls. If it's out there that he would like. For the ultimate goal there. Of the player. The ball's really in there for them. There's public opinion, repulsive. So. Things are happening. I haven't seen. Not necessarily secretive, but like, well, I said, you can't force anybody to do anything. So, it's kind of, they don't want to do it. They don't want to do, you don't want to do it. Clearly, nobody really knows the truth. The only way to get full transparency, I believe that word, right, is all over, public. And see how everybody feels.
All right. I think two. Point fingers. Well, they don't, you do, but they don't. But this does that. I think it's time that people need to state their reason why and see what. I think only that way is, way is. Because try to bully, try to troll, that didn't. Go ahead and have statements, say, here's the facts. Here's what it could save. Here's what it could, here's what it could benefit the children. Ultimately, I think all three communities want the best education possible for the kids. And honey titan community. Having a consolidated school, I've seen other communities work through it. They were to do it. And it offers so much opportunity to get their education and what they can have. You know, you've got some students that are literally graduating their senior year. They've got all their A P courses to take care of their first freshman year in college. We should have that. And I would like to see it go. So, with that, I think Councillor Higgins, right? Yes, sir.
Oh, well. I think. Probably a better reason. That's what you're going to hang your hat on. These three towns, we're gonna think they're identity. Motion down the court just because of identity. Used to be, what could have been, but it's not that way anymore. So, we need to catch up with. Or, or we're just gonna all fail. All eventually fail. Keep, keep going. We're not going to make it one more generation. Or if it's a generation, I keep hearing it's a generation away. Well, we're not going to make it another generation. So, people need to think of.
Councillor Higgins, you had your.
Yes, Councillor McGowan. I wasn't meant to try and keep them out of it. I wanted, I wanted to specify that. It was just, we need to take that step. All the parties involved, get their ideas, their thoughts, you know. I want, just wanted to express.
I, I agree. I'm not sure how this, this chair report turned into a debate about consolidation, so I think we need to move on.
Now, we, it's actually supposed to be the two-minute public comment, and yes, Miss Sullivan, I did see your hand. I, I, that was a very good way of. No, we, it's actually supposed to be the two minute public comment. And yes, Mrs. Sullivan, I did see your hand. I, I, that was a very good way of. There we are.
Sandy Sullivan, one of Sunset, aye. Consolidation may be what is needed, but before you even utter the word consolidation, you're going to speak school. I remember when I moved back here, the bad feelings there were in this town, between the school and the town. It has been one hundred percent. And if they think they've gone behind their backs and started talking about consolidation with the, without including the people who are involved, that's not going to help the city.
I agree.
You're not a teacher. You're not a.
Yep.
The ones that can tell you what needs done, dependents, and their opinion needs to be sought before you even ask the public. The public doesn't know what's going on. You've been begging the public to come to these meetings. And how many show up? And so, you don't need the opinion of the public. What you need is the opinion of the people who this is going. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, I think, I think. Mr. Mike to turn off. Sorry, my mic off. There we are.
There we are. Uh, Tamber Craig, four twenty-five Kelly Mobile Home Park. Um, what I'm going to say are my own thoughts and opinions, but I am a teacher at Medway Middle School. And I have had discussions with my coworkers about this option. And I think moving forward and involving the town definitely can work the women and that. Um, I think if you want to get further, the biggest thing you have to look at is not consolidating at least the high school into a school that already exists. The, I believe that the feelings are if we're going to do this, it needs to be something new. Cause moving Skank into Sterns or Sterns into Skank really isn't consolidation. It's kind of for, some people it just feels like a tape. Uh, and even though that's not the intention. But these are the feelings I get from talking to my coworkers and stuff in the other. So, I believe it's a great idea to move forward and stuff. But I think that we need to move forward with the possibility of building something completely new. Um, and I know that financially, that is almost unfeasible. But I think if we can look at it that way, we might get farther, further with the other town. If we're looking at consolidation between the town. Um, and that's just like I said, it's my own opinion, speaking from what I've heard and what I understand from the other side of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, Senator Congress Speaker? I'm just need to update on what's going on. Uh, what's going on with Andrew Hallid? I, I haven't seen him for.
Andrew has been very involved with the theater arts program at the school. And rehearsals and things that they have have not allowed him to be able to be part of this recently. But as soon as, my understanding, as soon as the production is done, uh, we should be seeing a lot more of Andrew.
Okay, I just wonder. I haven't seen him around. Ask, ask. He, boy.
Yep.
I haven't seen him.
It's a scheduling problem with him and the school activities.
Okay, that comes for us.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? Seeing, oh, we were so close.
Go ahead. Tom Malcolm, seventy-three street. Uh, just a reminder, Thursday night is Halloween. And we do, they were doing their annual tree closures and uh, Halloween activities along with Nazrein Church. They're all posted. But just a reminder, anybody still looking for trunks, if anybody wants down on. Avenue. Nice. Thank you.
Don't forget Mass Ave, which is now because Halloween Avenue. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Ooh.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Higgins, second by councillor Danforth. All those in favor, councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
All right. Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Demme?
Aye.
Uh, councillor Danforth? Councillor McGowan? Chair Madora, aye, is six to one.